Good evening, President Green, Superintendent Burton, members of the board, and esteemed guests. My name is Amelia Majstorovich and I'm a proud senior at CE Bird High School, home of 100 years of academic and extracurricular excellence. I'm truly honored to be selected as the April Caddo Parish Student Leader of the Month. At Bird, I currently serve as our Student of the Year, President of the Zonta Club, a top jacket, and Chair of the Tutoring Committee for the Science National Honor Society. I'm also a dedicated member of the Astro Club and Student Council, and I thoroughly enjoy volunteering my time as a math and science tutor and participating in the Bobby K. Hicks Smart Program. My time at Bird has been incredibly rewarding. I've taken every opportunity to be involved in both academics and service because I recognize how special and unique these opportunities are. I am deeply grateful to my parents, who inspire me daily. They immigrated to Shreveport from Bosnian Herzegovina, formerly Yugoslavia, in 1997, leaving behind everything they knew in pursuit of a better life. My father worked his way up to become manager at Superior Bar and Grill, and my mother was proudly known as one of the most respected employees at Julianne's Bakery. Now, they are the owners of Julianne's Bakery, and from them, I have inherited a strong work ethic, a deep love for our community, and an endless curiosity about the world. I'm also thankful for the dedicated teachers and administrators at CE Bird, as well as my fellow students, whose support, encouragement, and shared commitment to excellence continually inspire me. Following graduation, I plan to attend SMU, where I will study biology with hopes of pursuing a career in neurosurgery. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity to represent the students of Caddo Parish and the Yellow Jackets of CE Bird. At this time, I would like to invite District Four Representative Mr. Don Little to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Amelia, and you're representing District Four much better than I do. We're so proud of you. Join me in prayer if you so please. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen. And now, I believe we have Broadmore STEM will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Representing District Four, please welcome to the stage Brooklyn Jackson, Alisa Mitchell, Samara Robinson, Katerina Stemplinsky, Julya Kisak, Aiden Bedgood, Aiden Jackson, Rashawn Nash, Allison Marin, Sophia Varela, and Carmen James, students from Broadmore STEM Academy, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Thank you again to Broadmore. President Green, I will turn the floor back over to you for tonight's meeting. Thank you again for the opportunity to represent District Four and CE Bird High School.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Amelia. Are these your parents? And they're the owners of Julianne. Stand up so we can see you. I always like local business owners. Thank y'all so much for coming. You guys have done a wonderful job with Amelia. Thank you so much for choosing Caddo Schools. We appreciate you. Okay, we are down to the swearing in of Mr. Jerry Bowman. He can come to the front along with his company, who will be holding his Bible. Mr. Abrams, will you be? You can come to the front. As they're making their way, Mr. Bowman, do you have any guests here that are here? Well, let's go ahead and recognize them now. All Mr. Bowman's guests, go ahead and stand up for me so we can recognize you. Oh, pretty big there.
Just want to recognize the mayor, Mr. Tom Arsino, and any other elected officials. Do I see any other ones? Okay.
If you would please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jerry Bowman.
Do solemnly swear in affirm.
Do solemnly swear in affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As Caddo Parish School Board Member, District Seven.
As Caddo Parish School Board Member, District Seven.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Burton.
In addition to all of the incredible... Yeah, I don't... Oh, Broadmore, I was going to ask you guys to stop and shake the board members' hands really quick before you step out.
Good to see you.
Apologize. You'll start that way?
Yeah. It is for him.
Okay, I do also want to take a moment, a point of personal privilege, on the part of Mr. Bowman, to also thank the Brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. Can you also tell me that?
Say it again, say it again, please.
I said also a point of personal privilege on the part of our dear Jerry Bowman, as we also recognize the Brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
He said Crimson and cream is everybody's dream, so I understand.
There you go.
I understand. I'm a red and white girl myself.
Thank you, Broadmore.
And now, I believe we have Broadmore STEM will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Representing District Four, please welcome to the stage Brooklyn Jackson, Alisa Mitchell, Samara Robinson, Katerina Stemplinsky, Julya Kisak, Aiden Bedgood, Aiden Jackson, Rashawn Nash, Allison Marin, Sophia Varela, and Carmen James, students from Broadmore STEM Academy, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Thank you again to Broadmore. President Green, I will turn the floor back over to you for tonight's meeting. Thank you again for the opportunity to represent District Four and CE Bird High School.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Amelia. Are these your parents? And they're the owners of Julianne. Stand up so we can see you. I always like local business owners. Thank y'all so much for coming. You guys have done a wonderful job with Amelia. Thank you so much for choosing Caddo Schools. We appreciate you. Okay, we are down to the swearing in of Mr. Jerry Bowman. He can come to the front along with his company, who will be holding his Bible. Mr. Abrams, will you be? You can come to the front. As they're making their way, Mr. Bowman, do you have any guests here that are here? Well, let's go ahead and recognize them now. All Mr. Bowman's guests, go ahead and stand up for me so we can recognize you. Oh, pretty big there. Just want to recognize the mayor, Mr. Tom Arsino, and any other elected officials. Do I see any other ones? Okay.
If you would please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jerry Bowman.
Do solemnly swear in affirm.
Do solemnly swear in affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As Caddo Parish School Board Member, District Seven.
As Caddo Parish School Board Member, District Seven.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Burton.
In addition to all of the incredible... I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't...
Oh, Broadmore, I was going to ask you guys to stop and shake the board members' hands really quick before you step out.
Good to see you.
Apologize. You'll start that way? Okay, I do also want to take a moment, a point of personal privilege, on the part of Mr. Bowman, to also thank the Brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. Can you also tell me that?
Say it again, say it again, please.
I said also a point of personal privilege on the part of our dear Jerry Bowman, as we also recognize the Brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
He said Crimson and cream is everybody's dream, so I understand.
There you go.
I understand. I'm a red and white girl myself.
Thank you, Broadmore.
And I guess, since this is Mr. Bowman's special day, we can go ahead and do... That leaves us down to roll call. Mary, did you have something else? Okay. We're at roll call now, huh? We're down to roll call? It's time to vote. When the vote, when everyone has cast their vote, please show the vote, Ms. Fiebel. Okay. Ms. Yates?
Moved to approve the minutes of March 4th, 2025, and March 18th, 2025, Caddo Parish School Board Meetings, as recommended by staff, and submitted an electronic mail-out.
Ms. Tremell?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote at this time. If we're not waiting on anybody, Ms. Fiebel, please show the vote, and we'll be ready to roll. Okay, thank you so much. I now will turn it over to Mr. Burton for presentations.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board and audience, we are thrilled today to bring you just a wonderful mixture of students and faculty members that we get to highlight. You're going to see talent like, really like you've never seen before. So we're going to invite Ms. Mary Nash Wood, if she would, to come and introduce all of our guests that we have so we can begin the presentations.
Thank you, Superintendent Burton, President Green, board members, our incredible audience on this beautiful spring day. Have we got a lineup for you. So we are going to kick it off by visiting with some friends that we have that are courtesy of Dr. Muton over at Caddo Heights. Caddo Heights Math and Science Elementary School proudly presents its pioneering and talented drum line under the skilled direction of Mr. Isaac Brooks. Already recognized locally as winners of the doomsday battle of the bands, these young musicians have gained valuable performance experiences in parades, setting the stage for their future endeavors. Caddo Heights Elementary aims to cultivate these skills early, empowering students to grow and impact the world. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the Caddo Heights Math and Science Drum Line.
One, two. One, two. One, two. Ready, set. One, two. One, two. Ready, set. One, two, three.
Give it up for Caddo Heights. We're super proud of Caddo Heights. Mic check, mic check. Thank you so much, sir. Good job, good job. Good job, y'all are too cool. Good job, good job. Way to go, sweetheart. Good job, I'm proud of you. Way to go. Mic check. Good job. Way to go, y'all are too cool. Good. And that is the sound of Caddo Heights Elementary School. Thank y'all so much for coming out. Mr. Muton, thank you. Along with the band director, thank you so much.
Well, President Green, Superintendent Burton, I'm going to ask you to come on down here as we continue on through another incredible program highlighting our students and staff. In the meantime, guys, can we give another round of applause for Caddo Heights? Come on. Okay, so we are kicking off our presentations for this evening following our incredible musical performance with a familiar face now to you all. So I am excited to bring back our wonderful Student Leader of the Month. This is Amelia Majstorovich. Come on up, where I get to brag on you a little bit. So Amelia has already told you a little bit about herself, but she's also not one to brag, so I'm going to do it for her. So she said she's a senior at CE Bird, getting ready to be SMU-bound, where she is going to study biology, hoping to do neurosurgery. So yes, wanting to be an incredible, incredible individual in this world. She has so many attributes. She is the CE Bird Student of the Year. She's a top jacket, president of the Zonta Club, Chair of the Tutoring Committee for the Science National Honor Society Club. Not something I would be in, but Amelia, you can tutor me on some science, okay? She's also an active member of the Astro Club, Student Council, and with the little bit of spare time she has left between all that, she also tutors in math and science and is participating in the Smart Program. So throughout her time at Bird, she's embraced every opportunity that could be put forward to her. She has a passion for leadership. She has a passion for community service. And she credits a lot of that in her work ethic that she had instilled from her incredible parents, who you've also met here tonight. So we are so excited that she not only decided to share her talents with CE Bird, but is looking to share it with the greater community of Shreveport. She credits her success to the support of her family, the dedication of her teachers and administrators at Bird, and the encouragement of her fellow students with their shared commitment to excellence. Now, I can say all of that on a script, and it's all true for her. But I have to say also, Mr. Burton and I, whenever we were able to visit with Amelia earlier, what really struck her is just, you're a joy. You bring light wherever you go. So I really just want you to continue to share that light with others and inspire. Thank you for sharing your joy with us and being an inspiration. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, as she goes around. We do also want to note she has received from the superintendent a lapel pin that is signified as being a member of the Caddo Parish School Board and part of our leadership. It is only worn by our Student Leaders of the Month, as well as our Board Member Superintendent. So you're in a very select piece of company, Amelia. Can we give her another round of applause as she finishes out? Ladies and gentlemen. I say that we all end up fanning for the, you know, the students. We end up getting so excited. Ms. Bell's got to take her photo. Her Facebook's famous. Thank you, Amelia. So we are moving from Wine Avenue over to Raspberry Lane. I think you can see where we're going with this. Our 2025 Division One State Champions are the Lady Raiders from Huntington High School. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about them, and then we're gonna bring them up. The Lady Raiders of Huntington High School have made history capturing the school's first ever basketball state championship. With a remarkable season record of 23-6 and a dominant 7-1 record in district play, the team showcased exceptional talent, determination, and unity throughout the season. Their efforts were crowned with the title of Division One Select State Champions, an achievement that will be remembered for generations. Not only did the team succeed on the court, but listen to this, guys, they also excelled academically boasting an impressive overall team GPA of 3.8. Yes. So Lady Raiders are gonna ask you to come up, and as I do, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about them, so come on to the stage. So leading the charge on the court was Carly Hamilton, who delivered a phenomenal performance in the championship game. She was named the most outstanding player in the select championship, recording 27 points, eight rebounds, four steals. Okay, we'll get MVP right there. The senior class in particular shined this year. Jamari Bell and Carly Hamilton are earning their associate's degrees before they even graduate high school, a rare and impressive feat. Additionally, Bell, Hamilton, and Jayla Phillips were all recognized on the LHSAA All Academic Class List honoring their dedication to the classroom. Bell and Hamilton also earned nominations for the 2025 LHS BCA All-Star Game and were both named McDonald's All-Americans, placing them among the nation's most elite high school basketball players. Individual honors were also abundant this season with this incredible team. Carly Hamilton and Kendall Graham were selected for the 1-5A First Team All-District with Jamari Bell earning Second Team All-District honors. Kaylee Dupree and Kendall Stevenson received honorable mention recognitions showing the depth and talent throughout the entire squad before you. Behind their historic staff is an incredible coaching team as well. We have to give it up for head coach Brian Shine and associate head coach Ricky Evans. Also, assistant coach Keisha McLendon also played a vital role in the team's development achievements. We also would be remiss if we did not say thank you to Principal Nicholas Smith, who made this all possible as well, so congratulations to our Lady Raiders. So, audience, as board members shake the hands of these wonderful students, we also want to remind you or let you know, rather, we had the great honor of getting to host them in the superintendent's office to be able to celebrate this great achievement. And I will say, they were, yeah, yeah. I can never be Barry. I think I got it now. I was just gonna say, we also had the great honor of getting to spend a little bit of time this afternoon hosting this incredible Lady Raider, whoa, whoa, Mary Wood, that's Freudian slip, Lady Raider team. Yeah, I could've been worse. I'm sorry. And they were absolutely incredible. That's how we'll end that, guys. We're gonna let them exit. We're gonna let them exit, and then I'll say why I said that. Okay, so I think we're calming down a little, so I can tell you a little why I said that, I was reading ahead, guys. So, no surprises here. We're going now over to our wonderful friends over at Captain Shreve for our next winner, which is the Virginia K. Sheehy Most Influential Young Woman Award winner. We got a little surprise up our sleeves on this one, though, guys. The Virginia K. Sheehy Most Influential Young Woman Award honors young women for leadership, poise, and determination demonstrated through philanthropy. The award's namesake, Virginia K. Sheehy, was a groundbreaking civic leader, businesswoman, and philanthropist. Here to join us as we recognize this year's winner is a gentleman who knows all too well the tireless work ethic and civic mindedness of Virginia Sheehy, and that is her son, Andy Sheehy. Andy, will you please join us and tell us of the legacy of your mother, as well about, a little bit about this year's winner? Come on, sir.
Well, I heard President Green say that she likes small business, and we've been a small business family since 1932, and we hope our recipient today will carry on now and forever with the, hopefully you'll be going into business for your college career. And I graduated from CE Byrd in 1972, so we definitely have an ecumenical gathering here today, so, thank you.
So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about our winner as Mr. Sheehy gets to introduce himself. Shelby Owens is a senior at Captain Shreve High School and has completed over 300 hours of service work through the Elks Lodge Auxiliary, AC Steer Elementary, Oak Park Elementary, Captain Shreve High School, Red River Revel, Reruns Are Fun, and Broadmore Baptist Church. I'm gonna say that again, guys, 300 hours of service in this community, that's just incredible. She has received numerous accolades, including Captain Shreve High School Student of the Year, Caddo Parish High School Student of the Year finalist, an AP Capstone Diploma, AP Scholar with Distinction, Homecoming Senior and Junior Maid, Distinguished Scholar Honor, Silver Key Scholastic Literary Award, and Art Break Best of 11th Grade Award winner. And all in all, Shelby's just a wonderful, wonderful example of what's possible in this community when you decide to serve others, so congratulations to Shelby, and thank you for being Caddo. And thank you also again to Mr. Andy Sheehy for joining us for this incredible honor. No eggs today, we missed that. Ms. Bell's gotta get her Facebook photo first. Congratulations again, Shelby, you are wonderful. Can we give her another round of applause, ladies and gentlemen? So we've talked a lot throughout this program about things that are happening now in Caddo, and there's so many incredible students and staff members that comprise Caddo, but we also know that just as important as our current, it's our history. So we're gonna go back in time a little. The Bethune's 60th Anniversary of their groundbreaking baseball championship. So I have with us today, joining us, a group of men who never got the recognition they deserved. Sixty years ago, the Bethune Junior-Senior High School celebrated quite a victory. The 1965 Bethune High School baseball team led by Coach Clarence Conway earned the title of state champions. However, segregation policies at the time stood in the way of them getting the full recognition they deserved from the LHSAA. In telling of their story, I want to call up here none other than Roy Thomas to offer some comments about this moment in history. Mr. Thomas?
President Green, other board members, and Superintendent Burton, I'm a half of a grateful and appreciative Bethune Alumni Association. We want to express our heartfelt thanks to the district for helping us celebrate the 60th Anniversary of Bethune's historic state baseball championship. The only baseball team in Caddo Parish to win an LIALO state championship at the highest classification. To share a bit of this championship history, we have to go back to 1964, in fact, the summer of 1964. During this time, Bethune's baseball coach, Johnny Billbury, was promoted to head football coach at Valencia High School. He advised Bethune's newly appointed coach, Clarence Conway. His advice, rather, was straightforward and pointed. He said this, "This team is loaded, don't get in their way." Based on Coach Billbury's talent assessment, Conway drafted a championship roadmap emphasizing discipline, knowledge, and motivation to help the team realize its full potential. As the 1965 season unfolded, Bethune defeated some very strong teams, such as Webster High School and De Sota High School, which featured future Major League star Vita Blue. At the state LIALO Tournament, Bethune defeated Jonas Henderson High School of New Iberia and McKinley High School from Baton Rouge. The championship run ended with a victory over Peabody High School from Alexandria on the campus of Gremlin College, now Gremlin State University. Notably, their only loss occurred was on a cold, blustery day against George Washington Carver High School. At the end of the season, Bethune had won 19 straight games, finishing with an impressive 20-1 record. From this talented team, a total of six college baseball scholarships were awarded, and two professional baseball contracts were signed. Finally, a story about Bethune Junior-Senior High School is incomplete without honoring our beloved principal, Albert Maurice Moody. His dedicated staff. Thank you. His dedicated staff and committed, dedicated staff, committed parents of Moretown, Hollywood Heights, and Jefferson Page Road, where he's centered to the team's success. Serving as a high school from 1961 to 1973, Bethune's excellence in both academics and athletics earned our school a place on the National Register of Historic Places in America. Again, thanks for allowing us to tell our story about a team that was loaded. At this time, with Ms. Woods' OK, I'd like to ask the team to come up and, and I'll start with, yeah, I'll start with Charles Shaw. You may notice that there's a challenge in getting up, but it's only because he was fighting for our freedom in Vietnam. Warren Bryant. Warren was our statistician, and I think we actually, he started out in his career in accounting by keeping good stats. I always wanted Warren to put in an extra hit for me, but it never happened. And the reason it never happened, because I wasn't on the field, I was on the bench. Next one is Matt Alexander. Matt played every position or could play every position on the field. He received a scholarship to Gremlin, drafted in the second round by the Chicago Cubs, later played with the Oakland Athletics, and his claim to fame was that he played with the Pittsburgh Pirates that enabled them to win a World Series championship. And I think that was in 68, was that in 68? Not only that, Matt still holds some major league records today with his pinch running and scoring, so that's to be noted. And next, we have Gregory Johnson. Gregory was all-purpose, excellent athlete, and he also played quarterback on the football team, and Bethune was the first sister school to defeat Bogotie Washington in 1967 in football. Okay, we have Joseph Giles. Joseph Giles is, was also one of the stats persons with us, but more importantly than that, Joseph has an outstanding historical knowledge of not only Bethune, but the Moretown area. He is simply a great guy to talk to at any point in time. And, and the reason that he's having some challenges walking up the step, because he was a Marine after he left Bethune, he served in the United States Marine Corps. And next, we have Clyde Jeter. I like to call him Gliding Clyde. And he signed a scholarship with the Los Angeles Dodgers and played in their organization for a, for a number of years. Clyde Jeter. My claim to fame was very simple, and that is that I was the best bench person that Bethune ever had and ever will have. If they were giving an MVP for a bench person, that's me. I know we have some people here from the Cougar Nation, I know Robert Crosby is here, anybody else from the Cougar Nation that's here? Right? Oh, yeah. Please stand.
I'm gonna fix it. I was gonna talk, but you can't hear me. So the students are supposed to be bringing up items, so they're... Yes, they're supposed to be... And a book ended it.
Good afternoon to our board, President Green and Superintendent Mr. Keith Burton, and of course, to this wonderful community here. Want to recognize some of our kids who are here. As you know, this month is Autism Awareness Month, and we are so excited about the work that our kids are doing, as well as the faculty here in Caddo Parish Schools. We have been so blessed under the leadership of Mr. Keith Burton, our superintendent, Ms. Angela Henry, our chief academic officer, Dr. Matt Mitchell, of course, our chief of schools, and all of our chiefs for the financial, the mental, and the support that we bring. Today, we want to recognize a few of our students who are here, and I'm gonna call them up, for autism expressions, Ms. Leona Baker. And she's gonna speak to you in just a few seconds or a few moments about what we bring to Caddo Parish Schools and how excited we are for your support. Ms. Baker?
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Leona Baker. I am a student with autism from Bogoté Washington High School. Autism is not just something I have, it's a part of who I am, it's how I see the world. And though I can't, can, be challenging, it also brings a lot of great things too. Some people think autism, autistic means I'm boring or annoying, but is not, but that's not true. It means I think, though, differently. I notice things that other people miss. I feel different, I feel things deeply. I try to communicate or learn in ways that's different, but it does not mean it's wrong. Here's a short poem to help explain. Autism is amazing. I am not a puzzle, I am not a mistake, I am a new kind of rhythm, a wave in the lake. My brain is made differently, not better, not worse, just singing my song in a different verse. I've noticed the whispers, the flickers, the lights, I've dreamed in full colors by and learned by insight. If you take a moment, slow down, and just see, you'll find there's a lot of, there's a lot to learn from me. So open your hearts and open your minds, there is, the spectrum is wide and is one of a kind. Support, not pity, respect, not fear. Let's make other students feel welcomed here. Thank you for listening and giving students like me to be heard.
Our next guest is Mr. Wesley Lithango Davis from North Caddo, talking about swag bag presentation. All right. Y'all give him a round of applause. Thank you.
My name is Wesley Davis. I came from North Caddo High School. I made tumblers to support autism, for autism. This is what I made. This is what we made.
Each board member will be receiving their very own tumbler made by the North Caddo High School students. Also, you will be receiving your swag bags are coming around now. This is our autism department, Caddo Parish Autism Department. Y'all give it up, give it up, give it up. You also have some cookies from the Culinary Arts Program of Huntington High School. You also have some artwork from Broadmoor Middle School and from Captain Shreve High School, all in your swag bag. Give it up for our phenomenal students. And as you remember this day, always remember this month is Autism Awareness Month. We are so excited, for if we are truthful to ourselves, all of us were once young, vibrant, running, moving, shaking, yet now, we truly are. If we embrace it, a child, an adult, with an exceptionality, whether disability with glasses, with your smarts, with your brain, we are one unit together. Thank you, Caddo family, for supporting our students.
One more thing before we close out. Could we have the Department of Exceptional Children's staff, as well as students representing the organization, stand up, please, so we can recognize you and give you a round of applause? Thank you. Mr. Burton, I keep telling you, you know, we keep trying to up the ante every month, and I don't know how we get any better, but I am so proud to say that April brought with us some incredible presentations. Turning the floor back over to you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mary Nash Woods, and the presentations. Just want to say, I want the Exceptional Learning Department to know that we are here with you and behind you 110%. Thank y'all so much for coming out. I enjoyed the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Lockett. Okay, Ms. Bell is on to speak.
I just want to say thank you, because my sister was autistic student, and at that time, that she was born, they didn't have all what you all have. She had to just maintain, but I want you to thank you, thank you, thank you, that you make it aware, that people need to understand, those babies are just as sweet as the other babies, and I love them, okay? Thank you to the staff, Caddo Parish, for doing this. Thank you, Dr. Lockett.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Mr. Mail?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I would like to say to Dr. Lockett and her staff and the presenters today, you all did a top-of-the-line presentation. We've seen so many, but I want you to feel deep down in your heart that you poured out into us and we appreciate it. We want God to bless you and keep doing what you all do. Thanks to the staff, and Dr. Lockett, you keep doing what you're doing, okay? Thank you so much.
Okay. That leads us down to, and I'll let everybody take one minute to leave if you need to leave right now. We'll take 60 seconds. And all that would like to speak can start moving to the front if you don't mind. And I also would like to take a personal privilege. I see the newly sworn-in NAACP president, Mr. Alvin Oliver, is here. And his, what is Larry Ellis in the NAACP? Second vice president, Mr. Larry Ellis. Thank y'all so much for coming. Anybody, did I miss anybody with your... Mr. Michael Williams is here. Okay, thank you so, thank y'all for coming.
Madam Chair, I would like to recognize Darren Dixon, former school board member for District Seven. I told him he was an alternate, but we've got someone filling your chair at this time. And also, I would like to also represent, say a word about a member in the audience, Dr. Tim Jones. He's my pastor, and he's here today, and I'm so glad to see you.
I was just fixing to cut your mic off, but thank you for coming, Reverend Jones. Good to see you, Mr. Dixon. Okay. All right, it looks like we've cleared everything out, and I'm gonna kick it off with visitors. Let me go ahead and read. The Caddo Parish School Board welcomes your input and comments during visitor section. When your name is called, please step to the microphone, give your name and address, and make your remarks to the entire board. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. The clocks on the monitor screens will help you be aware of your time. When your time runs out, when your time runs out, your time is up. It is the board's policy not to respond individually to members of the audience. When appropriate, the board may refer concerns to staff to be addressed. As this is a public meeting, we ask that you refrain from referring to personnel by name or incident. In accordance with school board policy, derogatory statements about or directed at a school board member, any employee, or any other person shall not be allowed. Thank you. Okay, first on is Ms. John Glover. Ms. Glover, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Madam President. To the members of the board, John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana 7118. For years, quite a few years, I've stood in this position, speaking to members of the board about issues that requires not just your attention, but the attention of the citizenry. You all are about to make some decisions here tonight that will impact students in three different sectors of our parish. As you decide during your deliberation, I hope that you take into account the effects of what you all are doing aside from saving dollars. It is necessary that we indeed ensure that every child is met with resources that can change the dynamics of where they are today. We still have quite a few schools that are labeled academically unacceptable. Sadly, that is just the reality. How they got there, some would say it really doesn't matter, they're there. But now, we need an answer as to how we walk away from what has been keeping so many trapped. You know, years and years, we've been able to go to minutes, and we could see the detailed comments of every voice that was raised in this section, in this chamber. No longer is that available, except going back to a video that should not be. We as citizens should be able to read what each of the voices raised in this position has to say about any subject matter, yet we're being denied that information or those materials. At the end of the day, we the citizens did elect you all. Well, I didn't, in my sector, but you were elected, and you were elected to steward the school board, you were elected to steward your higher, the superintendent. And if what we've been getting for years has not changed significantly for the masses of students, then I would say we need to get back to the drawing board. Regardless of you making academies, closing schools, merging schools, relocating students, if you have not a solid plan to meet the needs of every child you are impacting, then you're doing us all a disadvantage. So I'm asking you all, as you prepare to address three pieces of legislation today, that you give true consideration, aside from saving a dollar. What will these children meet in your transitioning? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Ms. Kimberlay Jones?
Good evening. My name is Kimberlay Jones. Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. I live at 11893 Providence Road, Shreveport 71129. I'm here because I feel like this campaign is important, because when a school closes, it not only directly impacts the children, parents, and families that it serves, it also serves as a loss to an entire community. For far too long, school districts target inner-city schools as the initial and sometimes only target of school closures. Utilizing underutilization as their justification, Caddo Parish Schools skirts further erodes relationship and trust with the community they are supposed to serve. Education is the great equalizer, but unfortunately, Caddo superintendent and Caddo school board members appear to be complicit in an age-old movement that further disenfranchises certain children, certain schools, and certain communities. We must act now and prevent further closures and demand the accountability that all children deserve, whether on the west or south side of town. Parents, community, and Shreveport citizens are now demanding answers. We are also demanding that no more schools close in our community without a critical justification to do so. Our children matter, our neighborhoods matter, our futures matter. Caddo Parish school board members vote no to this proposal as it stands and keep our schools open, so that it can continue to serve in the unique and critical needs of current and future students and parents.
Uh, Ms. Kimberlay Jones?
Good evening. My name is Kimberlay Jones. Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. I live at 11893 Providence Road, Shreveport, 71129. I'm here because I feel like this campaign is important because when a school closes, it not only directly impacts the children, parents, and families that it serves, it also serves as a loss to an entire community. For far too long, school districts target inner-city schools as the initial and sometimes only target of school closures. Utilizing underutilization as their justification, Caddo Parish School skirts further erodes relationship and trust with the community they are supposed to serve. Education is the great equalizer, but unfortunately, Caddo superintendent and Caddo school board members appear to be complicit in an age-old movement that further disenfranchises certain children, certain schools, and certain communities. We must act now and prevent further closures and demand the accountability that all children deserve, whether on the west or south side of town. Parents, community, and Shreveport citizens are now demanding answers. We are also demanding that no more schools close in our community without a critical justification to do so. Our children matter, our neighborhoods matter, our futures matter. Caddo Parish School Board members vote "no" to this proposal as it stands and keep our schools open so that it can continue to serve in the unique and critical needs of current and future students and parents. As I've stated many times before, if you want to close something, close these magnet schools, because we need a magnet curriculum at every school. And just like we elected you, we can let you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, can't read the last name, but Carl... Okay.
I'm Carl Behan. I live at 3748, 47 Farmage Road, Keithville, Louisiana, 71047. Good evening, Superintendent, President Green, and other school board members. I'm Carl Behan. I'm a Bible Distribution Coordinator for the Shreveport West Camp of Gideon's International. Gideon's International is a worldwide, multi-denominational, Christian nonprofit organization that seeks to spread the good news of salvation through Jesus Christ by distributing God's Word in the form of Holy Bibles, New Testaments, iPhone application pads, and personal witnessing where allowed. As Gideon's, we take the biblical mandates seriously to spread the Word of God to the people of the world with Bibles printed in over 250 languages and dialects. Historically, Gideon members were allowed to hand out New Testaments to reading students in the Louisiana Public School System on campus. I received my first New Testament during a school distribution in 1960 while in the third grade. These distributions were terminated as part of the '60s era fallout of legal challenges brought about the separation of church and state. And prior to the court ruling, schools and staffs were expected to be held to the highest moral and ethical standards. The reasons was schools were not only institutions of academic learning, but expected to reinforce the nation's sense of patriotism, morality, ethics, equity, and general high ideals in a chaotic world. The school system was part of the extended village that raised our youth to be productive citizens. The resulting societal swing led to widespread drug abuse, school violence, disrespect for authority, student bullying on evolving social media formats, increased suicides, psychological stress, and all the other chaotic dysfunctional problems affecting our youth with which you're all familiar. The societal swing pendulum is swinging slowly as many young people are beginning to recognize the need for Christ in their life to achieve inner-spiritual peace with themselves and mankind. Our Gideon handbook suggests that we distribute Bibles on public property sidewalks as we make contact with the students. However, after conducting safety analysis at several schools, large volumes of automobile entry-exit and pedestrian transition traffic makes us hazardous and likely to impede the safe orderly flow necessary for students and drivers. It is for this reason that I humbly petition the board to allow the Gideon's to return to Caddo Parish School campuses on-site for New Testament distribution directly to students in grades 5 through 12. I am requesting approval for once-yearly on-site distribution that would not disturb classroom training nor alienate students who do not wish to receive the Bibles. Distributions will be planned and scheduled with school staff due to the unique layouts of each school to achieve these goals and parameters. Again, I thank you for your...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Alvin Oliver? Before you come up, Mr. Little?
My apologies, Mr. Oliver. I want to refer the gentleman to staff if we could, if he could perhaps meet with Mr. Greer to see if there's a workaround that's compliant with the law.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Oliver?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, board members. First of all, thank you, Dr. Burden. Thank you, Jasmine, for recognizing me. Thank you. Congratulations to you, Jerry, on your election. I want to talk about the possible closure of Queensborough Elementary School. You know, I come from Queensborough. I was raised in Queensborough. I'm a product of Queensborough. I attended Queensborough. And so certainly, like everyone else, I hate to see Queensborough or any community school closed down. I think I understand the financial aspect of it. No one wants to live in a house that's falling down, and you're steady putting good money on a bad product. Nobody wants to, people are leaving the neighborhood. I understand that. But I think what needs to happen with you school board representatives, particularly those who represent the black neighborhoods where the schools are closing, you need to do a better job. When we, when you are having talks about closing schools, you need to get the word out to the community, to the parents, to the students. You need to have community meetings and go deep. Explain to people, because some don't understand, you got to explain to people the logistics that they don't understand, that you got to explain the back-room workings that y'all talk about. Open the books and explain to people, "Hey, listen, this is why we need to close this school, because the upkeep is high, the enrollment is low, kids are moving out." Y'all got to explain to people so that they can better understand you. Otherwise, you're gonna continue to get the human emotion that you get when people come up here and they're upset because you're closing their community schools. I hate to see Queensborough close, but from a financial aspect, I can understand it. Do I want to see it closed? Absolutely not. There are still children in Queensborough, lots of children. There are still families in Queensborough, lots of them. And so I think you all need to, I saw a lot of men here, Jerry. I seen a lot of people of influence that saw you get sworn in. Congratulations on crossing over into the fraternity. I saw a lot of people of influence that saw, and no knock against them, but I saw them come to see you get sworn in, and they were your new fraternity brothers, men of means, men of influence. But I'd like to see these men of means and these men of influence show up, not just to see you get sworn in or somebody else get sworn in, but show up for these people, show up for these schools that we want to help them to stay open, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Lee? Mr. Craig Lee?
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Malcolm X said it best, "Education is our passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to the people prepared for today." Alvin and I were schoolmates at Lakeshore, at Fair Park, and at Queensborough. In 1975, my mother remarried and moved me and my sister from Lakeside, Allendale Community, to Queensborough, 2910 Milton Street. That, all of those neighborhood schools, Queensborough, Lakeshore, and Fair Park, we walked to those schools. Queensborough Elementary was two blocks from our house. Lakeshore was probably about a half a mile from my house. Fair Park was about a quarter of a mile from my house. That whole neighborhood centered around those schools. That's what the whole concept of education is. Somewhere in this game with the Caddo Parish School System, it became evident, and it wasn't any of you guys' fault, this happened in the late '80s, early '90s, where now neighborhood schools became not necessary for black folks. You know, for black folks, it became not necessary. And then for white folks, the premise was, "We're gonna have the creation of a neighborhood school through the magnet schools. So we're gonna bust our children, but we're gonna take over the neighborhood school, and now we're gonna bust those black children out of those neighborhoods." And that's how these neighborhoods started to dry up. When I came back to Shreveport as a pharmaceutical sales rep in 1994, the city of Shreveport was roughly about 220,000 people. Now we're under 190,000. And all of that is a byproduct of the education system. There is a challenge, and it's not just you all's fault. It's the city of Shreveport City Council's fault, the parish commission's fault, because there is no interrelatedness as it relates to the economic development of this institution. And that's the challenge. I am definitely against the closure. I understand the dollars, just like Alvin said, but we gotta do a better job of elevating the economic vibration here in the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo, in the inner cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Reverend Jones?
Madam President, to the members of the board and to our superintendent. Four of the schools in our community, that's Cedar Grove, if you will, four of the schools in our community were taken from us, three of which, under the guise of magnet schools, that children who live across the street cannot attend. They are bussed out of the neighborhood. As many as 75% of the children living in Cedar Grove are bussed out of the neighborhood to go to school. Atkins is in the 7600 block of St. Vincent. From 80th Street back, children are going to Southern Hills. A child that lives four blocks from Atkins is catching a bus sometimes in the dark to be bussed out of the neighborhood. What about that mother who's working two, three jobs to take care of five or six children? She can't walk from Cedar Grove to university for a PTA meeting. It's been more than 40 years, and it's time to accept the fact that the Cedar Grove experiment has failed. The Caddo experiment has failed. The magnet school system has failed. We have bragged about five or six exceptional schools, but we hurt all of our schools and even destroyed some of our schools to create five or six exceptional schools. While I know that our population is in decline, I'm struggling with the idea of 81st Street closing. I did not know, I did not know that we would spend time today on autism awareness. But what kind of message are we sending to spend time today on autism awareness and vote to close a school committed to autism? 81st has a unique mission, and it would be more populated if every child in Cedar Grove went to school in Cedar Grove. We've heard, we've heard, we've heard about the need for more bus drivers, but we would not need so many buses and drivers if we were not busing children hundreds of thousands of miles every month. Caddo, let's do the right thing by our children. Let's do the right thing by the Cedar Grove community. Let's bring back all the kids back to school in Cedar Grove. And then we would need both Atkins and 81st as it was when I was a child. I am respectfully asking that the school board redraw the lines for the attendance zones for Atkins and 81st Street schools. It's the right thing to do.
Ms. Doris Stevens?
My name is Doris Stevens, and I live near the Queensborough School. And everybody that got up here and talked, they, they said just what I was gonna say, but look...
Go ahead and state your address for me, Ms. Stevens.
2314 Darien Street.
Okay, thank you.
Been there 60 years.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
My granddaughter is an oncologist. She came out the ghetto, Fair Park, Queensborough. Got doctors in the family that come out of here. Anyway, I want to know, do the board just vote on things that come to you guys? Y'all don't make the decision to close schools, right? Do y'all make that decision?
We can't answer you. All you can, all you can, all we can do is listen right now, Ms. Stevens.
Okay, then. I agree with these people. We need schools in our neighborhood and for our kids to walk to school. I retired from this system, and I didn't know white folks had that many schools in their neighborhood until I started working for the Caddo Parish School Board in 1970. Their children walked to school, and we didn't have about four schools in our, in our, Boon, Booker T., they just had Jazz Clark Central, and that was it, a few more. That was it. We know what's best for our kids. And the last man that was here, college super superintendent, he closed five schools, and I had a chance to talk with him. He said, "Well, we closing the school because it's not enough children going to that school. That's what we need. We need smaller classrooms for our kids." We know what we need for our kids. I don't know what other people need for their kids, but black people need smaller classrooms. And I think that's what they saying about Queensborough and the rest of the school that you're closing. If somebody sits on their butt and decide what to do with us, quit saying what you're gonna do with us. We've been here a long time, and we ain't going nowhere. Better get right with us, you know? I didn't want to come out here and do this. People that, for the school closing, I want your naming thing, and we get together, it's something we gotta do. We can't depend on these people holding offices and seats. They just like our president. They don't know what they doing. So we gotta get in there and do for our kids. I'm serious. That's all I gotta say, because I saw this on the news, and I don't like looking at the news for something I should have been aware of. So I didn't sleep good last night, and I don't like not getting my sleep.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Michael Williams?
Madam Chairman, 2101 Carper Place, Shreveport, Louisiana, to my commissioner, to my dear friend, Mr. Barry. I rise to the podium to echo what's been said. I still believe in the American dream of getting a quality education in Caddo Parish. In spite of all the negativity, I think Caddo is one of the best schools and school district in America. However, do face some challenges, and these are uncomfortable times that we're living in. Because of the rhetoric that's coming out of Congress and Department of Education throughout America, it affects us locally. I believe information, not indoctrination, about the education of the students in the schools in Shreveport need to be vetted, and there need to be transparency, there need to be inclusion. Diversity and equity inclusion works. It makes, works it better when you inform the people why the changes are coming. Misinformation is not good because it's not getting to the grassroots people that live in these communities, these community neighborhoods. I believe the M&amp;M transfer was not good for our community. I believe Jerry mandating the line was not good. A lot of our schools that fell in because people are sprawling out and moving out. And we need to have some economic challenging, economic reconciliation, like education reconciliation to make the malar adjustment across America. So I just believe that the American dream of education and economics is alive and well, but we have to be inclusive to inform the people that's gonna affect. I'm gonna borrow my own English word that I make up like Jesse Jackson. They're not billionaires, they're not millionaires, but they're voting-ers. And these are the people that vote on renewal, tax renewals, and these are the ones that vote on amendments for you. So we have to be careful how we handle people because of their socioeconomic background, because of their zip code, or because of their social security number, because of their race or their party. These people still vote. And last time I checked, we serve at the pleasure of the people. And we need to recognize, when I was a public official, I always informed the public of these changes. We know it's about the money, we know it's about the budget, we know it's about the population. MFP follows these kids to these different schools. So we have to be, at least let the people know why the changes. These are emotional times in America. We need to learn to live in peace and unity. But we, when we talking about working together, the money always lead the black neighborhoods and the community and the schools. So if we're gonna be very inclusive and be transparent, let's let the poor, hard-working, tax-paying citizens of Caddo Parish be informed about these changes. And change is upon us, and that's gonna be some tough decisions. But why all this, all we have to affect the black community? They pay taxes. So I appreciate that we will reconsider and work in the spirit of compromise in our confrontation, and put yourself in their shoe. How would you feel if somebody closed your school? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, so before I call the next person up, Ms. Harley, do you want to speak during this time, or would you like to speak right before we get ready to vote?
I can speak now.
Okay, good deal. Okay, good deal.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right, so Miriam Harley, 9250 Dean Road. So everything that everybody has said has kind of just echoed everything that I was gonna feel and that I was gonna say. I want to add on to there, that with these closings of these schools, that the people that we don't trust you guys, we don't believe in anything that you're saying. Because we have seen the impact of this school board and the school system, and I know you're just now getting this position, but we have constantly seen a decline in the schools other than our precious magnet schools. We have constantly seen a decline in all of our neighborhood schools except for the magnet schools, and nothing has been done. We have continuously closed schools, but no kind of agenda has been set, no kind of plan has been offered to prevent those failing students who are going to close and merge with another school to prevent that school from becoming another failing school. There's no extra services that are provided at the school, there's no extra teacher support that's provided at the school. I understand the budget, I understand the way that the policy and everything is set right now with the administration and everything going towards charter schools, and we want to close up the public schools. I understand that part. But at the end of the day, it's about these kids getting an education, and that education being that pathway for them to have a better future. Every time you close a school and you merge one of these schools, and there's no kind of incentive or any kind of plan on how we gonna prevent these schools from being, continuing to be failing schools, we are failing more students. These are our future. When we're not providing a quality education to them that equals to any other city or parish or any other state where we are constantly having these failing schools, we are failing our kids. We see our governors celebrating building prisons. Every time you merge a school and you don't have adequate resources for these schools, you are helping and being complicit with filling those jail cells up with our kids. Instead of closing that gap of the school to prison pipeline, you ain't doing nothing but opening it. And then it's our kids that are being put into that system. Understand the school closings. Understand, understand it, understand the merging. But what we don't understand is that you are not coming up with an adequate plan to address those kids and those students of those failing schools. We are continuously to seeing where Caddo Parish, and this is before you, Burton, Mr. Burton, but where we are naming schools, naming schools, you know, culinary arts school, or we naming it a STEM engineering school, and it's not a true school. We just, JS Clark has been made a K through eight, and where Queensborough is gonna merge with them, and that's gonna be a vocational school. If it's not an integrated system curriculum, if you're not doing project-based learning, and if it's not real-
Thank you. I apologize, but thank you, thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you so much for coming. Mr. Kenny Gordon? Kenny Gordon, okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenny Gordon. I live at 630 Hendrix Place, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I have four questions, and I know you can't answer them, so maybe I can give you my email and you can give me the answer. Because these questions that I have, I have concerns about it. I am an accountant by trade, which means I'm a money man. And the question that I'm gonna ask are questions about the schools that you're gonna close. I agree with everyone that came up about closing the schools. It'll be a travesty if you do that, but I do understand the money. My first question is, where are the students going once 81st Street School is closed? Where you gonna put them? There's a lot of students over there. I know because I live in that area. So where are they gonna go? Where you gonna put them? My second question is, with all these schools closing, why have we not received a reduction in our taxes? I haven't received any, I haven't seen it at all. And again, I'm a money man, I look at everything. So I haven't received any reductions. Why? You closed the schools, we should get a reduction. The third thing I want to know is, what's going to happen when these buildings that you close? What's gonna happen to those buildings? What are you gonna do with them? I need to know this. And the fourth thing I'm gonna, I need to know is, if the building are sold, because some of you, you do, you sell the buildings. Because I know of one that was sold in Cedar Grove to a company, and I don't know what they're doing with it, but it was sold. If you sell the buildings, where does the money go? Our taxes should be lowered when you sell those buildings. You selling them for millions. You're not selling them for a thousand, because if you did, I'd buy one. You're selling them for millions. So where's that money? You don't tell us where it is. I don't see it in the news. I don't see where you're saying, "Oh yeah, we sold this building for $10 million, and Cedar Grove is gonna benefit from it." I don't see that. So these are the four things I'd like to know. You can email me at kgordon803@gmail.com and let me know what it is. And to these questions, I hope you wrote them down. Because you're not, this not gonna be the last time you hear from me, because I want to know what's happening to the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And I'm gonna take this time to get, somebody get his email address, and we will get you, I was listening to the questions. We'll get you some responses to some of your answers. Okay, Ms. Jones, you're on to speak for 8.5, 8.6, and 8.7?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I'll hold yours during that time. Sierra, I can't-
Hello, I'm Sierra Lee Ret. I live at 10013 Trailway Drive, Shreveport, 71106. Good evening. I stand before you as a concerned teacher at 81st Street ECE. It has only been two years since I stood here as a teacher at EB Williams Stoner Hill, asking you not to close that school. However, it was closed, and I, along with some of my colleagues, were moved to 81st Street, which now faces closure itself. I would like to address a few things concerning this proposed closure. Our school is a safe haven for young learners of all abilities. The oldest students on campus are six years old, which is a comfort to parents who don't want their young children alongside others twice their age and size. 81st Street is not a neighborhood school. Any student who lives in a Title I district may enroll on our campus. We do not provide bus transport for our regular ed students. Parents must bring their children to school and pick them up each day. The fact that they are willing to do this shows that they want their children at 81st Street. Parents make the choice every day to get their kids to school because our campus is where they feel most secure. If the goal of the school board is to boost enrollment at Atkins Elementary, where the students at 81st Street would be transferred to, I ask you to reconsider. Why would a parent want their child to attend that school when they could simply attend the school they're zoned for? I've already heard parents saying that they do not want their children attending Atkins, so closing 81st Street is not the solution to increasing enrollment at another school. Closing 81st Street ECE will not solve the problem at Atkins. With another year of school ahead promised to us, why not give us the chance to show what this school can be under positive leadership? We are actively working on boosting our enrollment for the upcoming school year. The school board says that money will be saved by closing schools, but this is not always the best choice for the students. Think of the children, the parents, the teachers, and the community, and reconsider when casting your vote today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Miller, 6207 Notaway Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. I stand before you disheartened. Here we go again, closing these schools. You know, every time I drive down Pier Avenue and I look at J.P. Hendrix, and I see the eyesore of that school. That school that was once vibrant and had so much to offer to students and families. And so now, here we are with schools about to shut their doors. And I was so taken aback by hearing that some of the parents wanted a meeting to voice their concerns, and that meeting was not granted. They need to be shown some respect and to be offered as people who are worthy of your recognition. Now, if you look at, why are we doing this to these schools when our predominantly white schools are not facing this? Now, if there was a meeting requested, I know they would have had a meeting. No doubt about it. So their rights are being trampled upon. And, you know, as I look at Queensborough, I served that school before I retired, and I had many interactions with the parents and the students, and it is so sad that they are meeting this demise. And so when we look at, why can't we look at other cost-saving measures before resorting to this? And you know, I worked at Atkins years ago, and I attended 81st Street School as a young girl, and when it was desegregated, we were sent to Atkins. And I'm just wondering, why are we sending our babies to a school that has not made yearly adequate progress? This makes no sense to me. In the words of the late Elijah Cummings, "We're better than this."
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. T. Smith?
My name is T. Smith, 3346 Garden Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. Good evening. I stand before you today as a product of 81st Street, as a former parent of four of 81st Street, and a staff member of 18 years of 81st Street, with my fellow cohorts behind me. Tonight, we express our deep concern about the proposed closure of 81st Street and to advocate for giving this school a real chance to grow and thrive. The decline in enrollment we've seen in recent years wasn't because families didn't want to be there, it was due to past leadership decisions that limited access and growth. Restrictive enrollment processes and lack of inclusive outreach created barriers that pushed families away. That is no longer the case. With the prospect of having new leadership and a renewed commitment from staff and families, we are already starting to see momentum. All pre-K students have now been given the opportunity to return for the following school year, which is an important first step. Even more telling, multiple parents have reached out and said they will re-enroll their younger children because they now feel hopeful about the direction that we're headed in. We know how it is, how important early childhood education is. These early years build the foundation for lifelong learner, learning, and success. And just be, just for individuals, and not just for individual students, but for the community as a whole. 81st Street has been a nurturing, safe, and enriched environment, and we believe it still has much more to offer. With time and effort, the school can return to full strength. Our goal is to steadily increase enrollment, building back the strong, vibrant community we once had. Closing this school will leave a void, not just in the service, but in the heart of the community. 81st Street is not just a school, it's a family, a group of people from all over Shreveport, where most of our students come from. They place their children there because their children are loved and met with care. It's a small place with a big heart. So please reconsider. Let's not close the door on a place that's already showing signs of new life. Give 81st Street a chance to grow and serve our children and our community the way we know it can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dorita Grigsby. I live at 625 West 67th Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I'm standing here today for all schools. I don't, I don't, I don't have a script. I come from the heart. Because our children is important, and I have heard that from a lot of you board members. Our babies, our children, how we care. But I can't understand why. Why? Why are we doing this? And then we doing it in our inner cities. Where we graduated from, where we went to school at, Atkins, 81st, Queensborough, all these inner-city schools. And this, this is very, very heartbreaking. Y'all just don't, I mean, I know y'all know, and y'all understand, it's just like the FBI. If they got you, they got you. That's the way it is. I mean, if you gonna close, you gonna close anyway. But just like I'm gonna piggyback off a lot of other people and say it, just kill, if you gonna do it, do it the right way. Just go and talk to the parents, the community. Let you know, let them know your game plan. If you have a game plan on closing, okay, let's do that. But also let the parents in those community know what you guys are doing. If it's, if it's closing the school to make it a better place, or we gonna cut down some of the bad trees, cut some of these grass, beat these potholes, okay, that's a good deal. So what are you gonna replace it with? Okay? So, you know, I, like I say, I don't have a script. I just come with a heart of my heart. Just hold down. Give them a opportunity to speak, to say what's on their hearts. And maybe if you listen to people's hearts, you understand more, not just money. My son told me one day I had a puppy. Mama, you finna kill that puppy, puppy. I said, "What you mean, I finna kill the puppy?" He said, "You not giving it a chance to live." If you're not giving it a chance to live, you just gonna kill it? I said, "No, I ain't gonna kill it." So I would have to spend a whole bunch of money on this puppy because my baby said, "You gonna let it die." Don't let it die. Give the people opportunity to voice their concerns. And I thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kiana Brooks. My address is 9004 Villanova Drive, 71118. I started at 81st Street last school year. In a short timeframe, I've honestly fell in love with not only the school, but also And most importantly, our amazing babies. It is devastating to know we are on the chopping block. The one thing that hurts the most is knowing if you guys vote to close 81st Street, our babies will be sent to unfamiliar environments that could cause detrimental regression. There is no doubt in my mind that there is a need for 81st Street ECE center. We accept kids as young as three with exceptionalities. I cannot understand how merging babies as young as three with fourth and fifth graders- I cannot understand how merging babies as young as three with fourth and fifth graders be anything but intimidating for them. I would expect nothing but regression with such drastic changes. 81st Campus gives those babies an opportunity at such a young age to get familiar with routine and procedures. Merging 81st with a school that has been an F-school for almost two decades doesn't seem to make sense to me. What will be next for us if the merge happened? Should we expect another closure in the next year or so? Will our babies have to experience another drastic change? Our babies deserve stability. We deserve stability. And it should speak volume that a parent got over 100 signatures to petition not to close 81st. That should speak volume. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We're down to Ms. Lansdale. You have five minutes since you're a professional organization. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jackie Lansdale, President of the Red River United, 1726 Line Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana. Good evening, members of the Board. Superintendent Burton, tonight, I come before you to speak on something that sits at the very heart of what makes our schools strong: our veteran-certified teachers. We often speak about student outcomes, achievement gaps, and accountability. But behind every student success story, there is always a teacher, one who has dedicated their career to this profession, one who stayed through the changes in curriculum, leadership, policy shifts, and societal expectation. One who shows up every day, not for recognition, but because they believe in what they do. We want to take a moment to sincerely state that we sincerely appreciate Superintendent Burton and his continued commitment to ensuring fully-certified teachers are in every classroom. His recognition of the value of these educators bring and the policies he has supported to make that a reality has not gone unnoticed. It matters, and our students are better for it. But today, we come with a concern that threatens to unravel that good work. Because as we fight to keep certified teachers in classrooms, we must also fight to protect them. We want to bring your attention to an uncomfortable but critical truth. When a teacher is accused of wrongdoing, particularly in cases involving alleged impermissible corporal punishment, we must handle those investigations with both integrity and balance. Red River United helped craft the policy that governs those investigations. We insisted on a process that takes every complaint seriously, as it should. No teacher wants a harmful action swept under a rug. But we also insisted that due process and fairness be a cornerstone of that policy. Unfortunately, what we are seeing now is a pattern where the fear of litigation or negative publicity takes priority over facts. In the rush to appear responsive, we risk sidelining truth and justice. Veteran teachers, those who have poured their lives into this work, are left vulnerable. And when the choice becomes defend my reputation or protect my retirement, we are essentially asking them, is it worth it to keep walking into your classrooms? That's just not a sustainable system. It is also not healthy for students. They are still learning what it means to act with integrity. When there are no consequences for making unfounded allegations, despite a Louisiana law that specifically calls for suspension in such cases, we send the wrong message. That law exists, but we never enforce it. We believe there is a better way forward, one that supports students and protects teachers and school employees. We suggest an investigation process that includes an honest evaluation of the accusation. Let's look at the motivation, the context, and the credibility. A process that recognizes a student's concern should be heard, but so should the entire story. Let's give parents and students the assurance that their concerns are taken seriously, but let's also give our educators the security of knowing their careers won't be jeopardized by fears or optics. Because the continued targeting the most veteran among us, those near-retirement, who may be the highest-paid, most experienced, and qualified, is not just demoralizing, it borders on discrimination. And if we lose them, we lose institutional knowledge, mentorship, and a death of instructional excellence. And replace them with what? So tonight, I urge you, let's build on the good work already happening here. Let's keep fighting to place fully-certified teachers in every single classroom. But let's also fight to keep them there protected, valued, and respected. We remain ready to work with this district in good faith, to find solutions that elevate both students and educators. Together, we can ensure that Caddo Parish remains a place where teachers want to start and finish their careers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lansdale. This closes visitor's section. Did they fill out a card?
Yes.
What's the name?
Samantha Harrell.
I don't see it in my stack. Okay. Yeah. When did you put it in?
Moments before I realized that's where the box was.
Okay. Out of respect, ma'am, I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak right now. But we normally have a process that you need to have everything turned in by 4:30. Alrighty, but I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak.
Thank you. My name is Samantha Harrell at 8112 Timmons Trail, Shreveport. My question is for the 8-6 for Blanchard Elementary. The concern of mine is for the building has no plan for after we move our children to Donnie Bickham to be a K-8 school. I will bring back Timmons Elementary when it was closed, and it is still remaining vacant. Nothing is done to it. And so our town of Blanchard is going to remain with the Blanchard Elementary School as being vacant. My question and maybe suggestion to you is to please think this through for when you do have to remove these children in one year from now to make sure that this school is not gonna remain vacant. Have a plan. Our school and our community comes together on these grounds. We have festivities there repeatedly, year after year. And then we're gonna have to sit there and do these at a vacant school. Supposedly, there's millions that is going to be provided to Donnie Bickham Middle School. But we cannot fund... Somehow, we cannot fund the current schools that we have. I am concerned that we're not spending our fundings correctly in being able to take care of the current schools that we have, but willing to build new schools to a future unable to be able to provide and fund for them. So my question once again is if we're spending millions upon millions to be provided to Donnie Bickham Middle School to be a K-8 school at this point, no longer doing Blanchard Elementary, why can we not fund Blanchard Elementary to be repaired? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jones and Ms. Glover, I'll hold your cards to the appropriate time. And that now closes visitor's section. Okay. We're down to establish the agenda and proposed agenda. Mr. Burton?
Thank you, President Green. Members of the Board, our agenda for tonight, April 15th, 6.01, personnel recommendations, there are none. 6.02, personnel leave, certified and classified, that is on consent. 6.03, personnel resignation, certified and classified, also on consent. 7.01, capital project bids, there are five for your review. 7.02, purchasing bids, that one item is on consent. 8.01, property and bus rental requests, there are five, and those are also on consent. 8.02, consideration to approve MOU between the Youth Enrichment Program and Caddo Parish School Board, also on consent. 8.03, consideration to approve proposed revision to the 2025 board meeting schedule, that is also on consent. 8.04, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results held in the parish-wide school district of Caddo Parish, Louisiana, on Saturday, May 29th, 2025, to authorize the renewal of special taxes therein, and that is on consent. 8.05, consideration to approve staff to coordinate the closure of Queensborough Elementary at the end of the 2425 school year with students zoned to attend JS Clark Academy and to prepare the property to be listed for sale at its appraised value with our listing agent and dedicate proceeds from the sale to an account dedicated to future construction of instructional facilities. 8.06, consideration to approve staff to coordinate plans for closure of Blanchard Elementary School at the end of the 2526 school year and consolidate with Donnie Bickham Middle School, which will convert to Donnie Bickham Elementary Middle School, a pre-K 8-2 campus beginning fall of 2026. 8.07, consideration to approve staff to coordinate plans for the closure of 81st Street ECE at the end of the 2526 school year and all students be assigned to Atkins Elementary. 8.08, move to secure an updated appraisal for the Norris Ferry property and advertise for sale by bid or listing at the appraised value and dedicate proceeds from the sale to an account dedicated to the future construction of instructional facilities, and that is on consent. We have 13.01, we have one student expulsion appeal hearing. The parent is not in agreement, and that is it. Madam President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burton. I'm going to go back through and see if there's any that you would like to add on to consent. 6.01, empty, okay. 6.02 is on consent. 6.03 is on consent. 8.01 is on consent. 8.02 is on consent. 8.03 is on consent. 8.04 is on consent. 8.05? No consensus, okay. 8.06? No one? 8.07? No one? Okay. 8.08 is on consent. Alrighty. And we also have one student expulsion that's not in agreement. There's nothing there. Okay.
Madam President, a quick question on 8.05. I thought we had said that it wouldn't be listed with an agent, that it would go out to bid. So what we have on this is different than what's listed. To save us some money, I think...
Mr. Abrams?
Proposed motion.
Can you speak where we can hear you, Mr. Abrams?
If you would look at the proposed motion on it, it does have that on it, either or.
Okay, I got you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I saw it was different. I was just... Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent. Ms. McLean, were you on for this?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. When you were reading out the consent, I believe you skipped over 7.02, which I just had a question about.
It was on consent before.
Can I pull it from consent then, so I can ask a question?
Okay. 7.02 will be pulled from consent for questions? Ms. Trammell?
Move to establish the agenda and the proposed consent agenda for the April 15th, 2025 Caddo Parish School Board Meeting.
Ms. Yates?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote. Now we need to vote to confirm the consent agenda.
All right. Move to confirm the consent agenda for the April 15th, 2025 Caddo Parish School Board Meeting.
Ms. Yates?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second? Please show the vote. Dr. Vincent, please vote. Thank you so much, Ms. Feibel. That leads us back to 7.02 for purchasing. Ms. McLean?
Thank you. Move to approve the following bid as recommended by staff and submitted in the electronic mail-out on the scoring tabulation sheet. Bid 05M-25 Musical Instruments awarded to Guitar Center Stores, Inc., Music and Arts, Sweetwater Sound, Washington Music Center, West Music Company, Taylor Music, and Universal Melody Online, doing business as Brook and Maze Music.
Mr. Rochelle?
Second.
Okay. Ms. McLean?
I was curious how we came up with which schools received these instruments. I'm particularly curious because Southwood's not on here, and I will say they do have the best bands, high school band nationwide. And I would put them against any competitor nationwide.
Now, hold on. Now, hold on. I have to call a point of order right there. I have to call a point of order right there. Mr. Burton, please.
Thank you. I hate to get in the battle of the bands here, but I guess I'll step into that. Great question. We have a rotation that we use not only for instruments, but also for band uniforms. And so we are constantly looking at inventory. If there is a band program that has an emergency, in the past, we have actually moved them up where needed. But there is a rotation process so that all schools can receive upgrades in a timely manner.
Okay, so I'll see them on the next rotation then? Lots of good, shiny instruments on there.
In a rotation in the future, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Rochelle?
No comment.
Okay. Since there's nobody else on the board, we can vote right now. Please vote. And after the votes are cast, Ms. Feibel, please show the vote. Thank you, Ms. Feibel. That leads us down to 8.05. Consideration to approve staff to coordinate the closure of Queensborough. And I believe Mr. Little is on.
Move to approve for staff to coordinate plans for closure of Queensborough at the end of 2425 school year with students zoned to attend JS Clark Academy and to prepare the property to be listed for sale by bid or listing at its appraised value and dedicate proceeds from the sale to an account dedicated to future construction of instructional facilities as recommended by the Building, Grounds, and Security Committee and submitted in the electronic mail-out.
Mr. Rochelle?
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Little?
No comment.
No comment. Mr. Rochelle?
No comment.
No comment. Ms. Tharp?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And just in full transparency, I want to again state...
Hold on one second before you go in. I have to let visitors speak at this time. I forgot. But we're gonna hold you right there. So, Ms. Glover, you can go ahead on 8.05. So, Ms. Glover, you can go ahead on eight point zero five.
John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, zip code 7118. Again, to the members of the Caddo Parish School Board, Mr. Superintendent, with the current student ratio of 275 students at Queensborough, that is what you are contemplating sending over to J.S. Clark Academy, because it will be an academy beginning the 2526 school year. The school is under capacity, some 200 students, and we understand that. The grades that are being addressed, pre-K through five. Where I understand change, not always appreciative of it, I do understand it, but what I don't understand is that I stood out at Queensborough last Friday evening because a meeting was called, to learn that the meeting was called off, meaning that those persons in that community did not get an opportunity to hear a plan that had been developed, devised, seemingly implemented, if you all approve this move. Now, again, we understand dollars and cents, we truly do, but we want to make sure that it is not just dollars and cents that you are contemplating closing this school, but we know that that is, that is indeed what it is. A plan developed that does not address the needs of students who are already in academic peril is not a plan worth even sharing, because we haven't been shared a plan. We don't know what you have for the children that are gonna leave Queensborough. Do you know the assessments of each of these students? Do you know their needs academically? What do you know about these children that you will collectively decide their fate? We hear time and time again that children, not all children, would go to college. You know, I've never heard that when I was growing up. I always heard education was the key to your future, but now we have a new norm. Not every child would go to college. Well, I can guarantee you that is a true statement, if not every child is prepared to go to college, and that not only comes from the home, but what's going on in those classrooms. So why it is that you will probably, more than likely, do what you're gonna do anyway, because, as it has been said, the die has been cast. But think about the children, not just the dollars and cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Ms. Kimberley Jones, and why she's coming, I believe we have, is that 97.7 in the building?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for coming, 97.7, thank you. All righty.
Good evening again, Kimberley Jones, 11893 Providence Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129. As a representative of both directly and indirectly impacted students, parents, families, and citizens, we're asking you to delay your vote, keep your promise of meeting with directly impacted parents and community, and make a clear case for why this proposal was made. According to the memo from Caddo Parish School, a local organization has sent correspondence expressing their interest in purchasing the school building. Should the property be listed for sale, the proceeds for this sale would then go to a dedicated fund for future instructional buildings. If the financial situation of Caddo Parish Schools is so adversely impacted by the operation of Queensborough, why then are precious funds being stored to build future buildings, instead of being leveraged and applied to the students that are being directly impacted? My question is, what instructional facilities will be built? Where will these facilities be built at? And when will we, the public, learn about it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, that leads us back to Ms. Tharp.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to be transparent and state that I will be abstaining from this vote or this conversation, because I do work for Willis Knighton, who has shown an interest in this property.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tharp. I want to speak before you, Mr. Little. Yeah, well, just want to say, I do understand that change can be hard, it's kind of hard for some folks, and with this Queensborough property and us losing students in Caddo, when I first got on the board, we had 42,000 children in Caddo. We're now down to how many, Mr. Burton, 33, 34,000? 33,000 students. That is a lot. Not only is that a lot of students, that's a lot of money. You can't continue to ruin a school system and have 150 kids here, 200 here, and I know we like small, small classrooms or whatever size, but then you also have to look at the fact that you don't have a lot of people going into teaching. Teaching is not as attractive as it once was before, so we have to make the adjustments, and I think with Willis Knighton being interested in this building at this time, I think, and J.S. Clark making the move that it's making, I just think, and I'm the last person to vote for closing any school, you guys know that about me, it's been tough, but I think this probably, at this time, may be the right thing to do, especially with our declining population. So, Mr. Burton and staff, especially our academic staff who has been, who's thought this thing all the way through, we appreciate you guys so much, and especially this handout, I appreciate that as well, that explains a little bit more, but thank y'all so much, and I think this may be the right way to go as far as it is, as far as Queensborough. Thank you. Mr. Little?
Madam President, call the question.
No, I think you have to have a second. Okay, Dr. Vincent?
Do we vote on call the question?
No, if you don't have a second, we cannot vote. So, somebody, did you-
She wasn't on the board, you gotta be on the board, don't you?
We don't be on the board, this is you.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Vincent.
Thank you, thank you so much. I guess I have some questions in regards to the-
Wait a second, and let me get, hold on, because this hasn't happened like this before. Mr. Abrams, if somebody makes a motion and they don't get on the board to second, but they still get a second, how does that work?
Except for, Dr. Vincent got on, he got on before, somebody then made a second.
Is anybody gonna second, Mr. Little?
Yes.
Okay. He got, she, he got a second and they just didn't get on the board. Is it my ruling?
He made a motion.
Okay, so, since it's my ruling, let's go ahead and vote for call for the question.
Madam President, I would ask you, I was already speaking, I would ask you to respectfully allow me to-
Are we fixing to vote right now, Dr. Vincent? I appreciate you. Please vote, Ms. Feibel, when you're done, as soon as we're finished voting, please show the vote. Okay, that motion passes with eight. That leads us down to eight point oh five, which is the original motion. We're ready to show the vote. On the original motion, passes with eight. That leads us down to eight point oh six. Dr. Vincent?
No, ma'am, I'm just getting on the board this time, so I won't get cut off, so would you please allow me to speak prior to anyone calling the question, madam, please? I'm just on the board in anticipation of the debate.
We're down to eight point zero six.
Yes, ma'am, I'm just letting my voice be heard, so you can keep that in your mind, please, thank you.
Does it say president somewhere up there? Oh, okay. Does it say president on my paperwork? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rochelle?
I thought that was funny. Move to approve for staff to coordinate plans for closure of Queensborough at the end of the 2425 school year with stu-, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna read eight point zero six this time, okay? Move to approve staff to coordinate plans for the closure of Blanchard Elementary School at the end of the 2025 through 26 school year and consolidate with Donnie Bickham Middle School, which will convert to Donnie Bickham Eller Mallory Elementary Middle School, a pre-K through eight campus, beginning fall of 2026, as recommended by the Building, Grounds, and Security Committee and submitted in the electronic mailout.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Tharp. Mr. Rochelle, would you like to say anything?
No comments, all right.
No comments. Ms. Tharp?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to just state that these decisions are never easy, but we have been given a mandate by the state superintendent to right-size our district. That is a mandate, and if we don't, then we have seen what can happen. They will do it for us. So, like I said, these decisions are very, very hard, they're heartfelt. When I got elected to this board, a school in the heart of Broadmoor had just been closed. So that is what I inherited, the closing of Arthur Circle. And I worked very hard to do something with that empty building, because it was empty for almost two years, but I did work with the community, I held community meetings along with Dr. Gori and staff, and it was, it was difficult. I got raked over the coals, it was hard, but there was light at the end of the tunnel. We found a great solution for that school, which was finding a state charter school that bought it and took it over, Louisiana Key Academy, for dyslexic students, and now the school, it looks beautiful. It's maintained, the neighborhood's happy, but, but it was hard. So, you know, that's, that's what I would suggest to, to people with an empty school in their neighborhood, work with your, your school board member, see if there is, you can find a solution, whether it's another, whether, whatever that might be. It's possible, I'm gonna tell you, it's possible, okay? So those are, those are just my heartfelt emotions tonight. I appreciate all staff's work in this, and I appreciate all of you, everyone coming out tonight to voice your, your concerns. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Glover and also Ms. Jones, you guys can make your way to the podium.
May I ask a question before I start, please?
I can't answer it.
Well, but you need to, because I was supposed to have spoken before the member spoke.
You may speak now, Ms. Glover.
John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. Well, it is evident that our voices really don't matter. Regardless of the heartfelt conversation that board member just shared with us, it makes no difference what we have to say, because the die has been cast. Blanchard Elementary had 404 students attending pre-K through third grade. Definitely will raise the student population at Donnie Bickham, if it is, and you all approve this tonight, with the intent of closing that school at the end of the 25, no, 25, 26 school year. I don't know what to say. I really don't, because when you all have decided behind closed doors, prior to coming to us with this information, there's nothing seemingly that you all are listening to. And again, evidence is there. You know, as you are heartfelt about the decisions you make, we are heartfelt about the decisions we are bringing to you all. We're not telling you how to do the job, well, we're telling you that you need to at least consider us in your conversations. I don't think any of us have been truly given consideration, from the beginning of the Queensborough situation, to the Blanchard situation, and then 81st in a few minutes. The decisions have been made, and that is a sad state of affairs, when it is that you say, come to us, we will hear you, not when a decision has already been made, you hear nothing. You hear nothing. And so now we stand here at the what? Not mercy, because there's no mercy here. There's not even grace here, because the grace and mercy is to the students that you all are getting ready to dis- relocate to another place, without even considering how these children are performing, what their needs are, or anything of substance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover, Ms. Jones.
Kimberley Jones, 11893 Providence Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129. I come behind my fellow veteran sister. This is ridiculous. The needs of the students that are currently matriculating through pre-K through fifth grade in the 2526 school year would be directly impacted by the upheaval and removal from their familiar learning environment, to then acclimate to not only a different school, but also a different type of environment. As you are charged with creating stable learning conditions, why would you then disrupt the learning environment for our vulnerable students? Close the school and shuffle students. Not only am I talking about Queensborough, but Blanchard, and then we looking at ECE 81st. Even cattle staff are extremely concerned about the significant impacts these closures would have on all parties involved. This move would not only disrupt the learning environment, but it impacts the livelihoods and career trajectory of committed educators and educational leaders who have committed to our students. As a fellow military veteran and a former teacher in Caddo Parish, this is so disheartening. This is very disheartening, but I would say each and every time I come up here, what you need to close is these magnet schools and provide a magnet curriculum in every school. Bring our children back to our neighborhoods, you got the plan, look at Bozha, you have the plan. Be that school board and do the right thing. You can shake your head all you want to, because remember, just like we voted you in, we can vote you out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Dr. Vincent? Dr. Vincent?
I'm glad the superintendent stepped back in, because we mentioned, obviously, we all know that the population in Caddo and the students have gone down. Do we know the budget? Because I had somewhere to be tonight, but hearing this has really rared up some questions in my mind and in my heart. What was the budget 10 years ago? Versus, or five years ago versus today? We know we've had a decline in population, but I guess what I'm saying is, we just passed the renewal, and everybody's saying we're so fiscally strapped, we're using finances as the backdrop to start to close schools. So I'm trying to understand the financial implications, because no one has really talked about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know, go ahead, hit him one more time, please. You just cut it off. Alrighty, there you, there you go, okay.
Dr. Vincent, I think your question was, what was the general fund and federal budget 10 years ago?
Yeah, and I don't, I know you don't know by the dollar amount, just ballpark.
I have no idea what that ballpark would, would be.
Mr. Howard, can you get, ballpark?
No sir, but I can tell you that if we lost 10,000 students over the last several years, that equates to about $55 million every year in revenue from MFP from the state.
And so, have we lost 55 million la, from last year to this year? I get, I mean, you know, I'm trying to get an idea where it, our, our budget now currently is, upwards of 500 million, correct?
The general fund's about 420 million, I believe.
Correct, okay. And so I'm trying to do a comparison in my mind, when we're saying that, you know, this is a fiscal problem.
I, I think it's very clear, to go back to the presentation two weeks ago, this was not only a fiscal conversation. We talked about the educational implications of providing true, fully, you know, vested educational experiences for children in very small elementary schools. You are not able to provide to them. You just heard tonight a performance from Caddo Heights. We could not provide that level of enrichment and opportunity for those students if they were at a very, very small school. So what we're trying to say is, we are ensuring that our focus has never been on buildings. Our focus has been on ensuring that those students are moved into educational settings to where they're going to thrive. They're going to have higher numbers of certified teachers, they're going to have greater enrichments, they're going to have greater opportunities, and that's been our focus. It's never been just about buildings.
Okay, let me move on then, because I don't want us to get stuck in the mud with that. As far as community meetings, because I mentioned we should have community meetings for all of these communities. Were they held at all of these particular closures?
No, they were not.
Okay. I want to make that point, that I, I made that point in our retreats, that we should have had community meetings regardless if we were gonna close them, if we had a, a purchaser of the building, I felt community meetings were vital, because that's the, as was mentioned by a former, not a former, but mentioned previously by a board member, that community meeting spawned some great ideas, and I think the community has spoken also, that said that there was a, an issue.
And Dr. Vincent, if I may, that is why the staff's recommendation to you is not to close these schools, that we do not have a plan for those buildings immediately. We are intentional ensuring that those buildings will not close and become vacant buildings. That gives us over a year to work with the community. And as we said at our last meeting, we're willing to do that, so that we do not leave those buildings as an eyesore in the middle of their communities.
Yes sir. And, and out of all due respect, superintendent, seriously, that's not the case for all of these closures, and that's the problem.
All, all due respect, sir, we followed the, the, we followed those principles in every situation.
Okay, I'll make this statement, for every closure that I've had any involvement in, community meetings happened, at least in my district. And so again, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out, so when we move forward, it may be a different process that we take. And again, I brought this up two weeks ago, and we had time, and I was also going to that meeting on Friday. I didn't speak to any of these people prior to the meeting, that, that's also another point I want to make. Last meeting, a board member mentioned, in conclusion, a board member mentioned resources that are being provided to JS Clark, because actually JS Clark is on this particular handout more than Queensborough. How many certified teachers are currently at JS Clark, percentage-wise?
Dr. Vincent, when you're asking questions and you want those type of percentages, I would professionally and politely ask that you give us time to bring the data to you, so that we're not just pulling, you know, figures from the air. Staff is here from many times after 7:00 in the morning until right before this board meeting, and we could have easily, even at 4:00, provided you all this information had we known.
Yes sir. Well, these questions, or these questions came up as people were talking, and in, in addition to remembering what another board member mentioned, because I think in our executive committee meeting, it was stated that resources would be provided to JS Clark. Let me ask that question. What are those resources? That is a better, fair question.
Point of order, we're on 8.06, that's not JS Clark.
Okay. No problem. What resources will be provided to schools that are closing in regards to additional support?
To the students?
In regards to, I mean, certified teachers. Yes sir, I mean, the same, and the reason why I mention certified teachers, it's important to say this, because as you mentioned, the most important thing is the certified, that's the first step. And so that's why I only mentioned how many certified teachers are in the building and things like that.
First of all, those teachers who are certified in those buildings, we have already met with all of them, and our goal is to have them follow those kids to their future school after next year. So again, that, that's already been decided. They know those families. We've worked, not only, not only was I present at those faculty meetings, but we had our HR staff there to answer questions. The other services and supports that are going to be provided will be what we do to any of our high priority schools, ensuring that we're staffing them appropriately, ensuring that we have the interventionists that are there, making sure that we're providing high-quality tutoring, making sure that we have, just like, as, you know, you mentioned JS Clark, we had a, and you were there, we had an auditorium full of people in that community and partners who are wanting to make that school. And by the way, that school is, you know, it's, it's within one point of being a C. So when we talk about schools being in peril, that's going to be a school that, that pretty soon will be out of DNF status. We are, we, we have outlined a very intensive plan of what we're doing at each of those schools, and are very, we're looking forward to the opportunities.
Yes sir, I, I'll send a request, because I'm interested to see where, for an example, the certified teachers are now and where they'll be next year, and those other type resources I'm, I'm mentioning, you know, I'm, I'm talking about or referencing, in addition to some of those other supports that you talked about. Thank you, sir.
Yes sir.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent. Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to reiterate that these are difficult decisions that we have to come to. As a mama, I know it's hard to move kids from school to school, and it, it is not an easy thing to have to do. I do have a couple of questions. I know we're more in statement time, but they shouldn't be super detailed. I keep hearing this number of this renovation to Donnie Bickham is going to cost $60 million. I keep hearing that $60 million thrown out, so I just want to clarify, this is not a $60 million project, correct?
Yeah, what, that, that was on social media, and it was, it was incorrect, that amount, I think they were attempting to refer to the $40 million that this board has set aside for future instructional, you know, construction. So I think they were confused, but there's, there is in no way, we're not even going to come close to a $60 million project, adding a wing on, at Donnie Bickham. So that is an incorrect number.
Do we have a ballpark?
Uh, we, Mr. White, if you'll come up, I know he spoke last time of that, and he can, he can answer any of the questions. Thank you, Mr. White.
At this time, there's not a definite plan for exactly what this wing would look like. There've been some sketches, some ideas. We were tasked to find out if a certain size building could fit in the space that's available. How would it look at the school? In general terms, we would allow, we're talking about classrooms that are gonna be about around 900 square feet. I would say per classroom, you probably allow 1,100 square feet per classroom. This allows for corridor space, other spaces that are needed, such as toilet rooms, mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, such as that. And then I would look at probably 400 to 425 dollars per square foot. That's the current price of construction on that. But until a definite plan comes up stating the exact number of rooms, let us come up with a configuration, get the actual square footage that goes in there, see how the, the new regulations of the storm protection in the IBC, International Building Code, affect this, I'm not gonna be able to give you a very accurate number. But we can certainly work through this, and I can report up through my superiors to Mr. Burton and get you a more accurate number.
Okay, and we'll put this out for bid pretty quickly, right? How, how soon are we gonna get it out to bid?
We were discussing that in my office today, and we would think a building of this size is going to take nine to 10 months in construction. It's got to be advertised for bid for 25 days in accordance with Louisiana Public Bid Law. But at this time, in conjunction with that, a definite architect has not been selected. We've worked with a architect that has helped us with some of the planning. So, it's a very, very aggressive schedule to look at August of '26, but I think it's one that unless, you know, we experience monsoons through next winter, it's one that we can make. So, but you're absolutely right, there is no time to waste. So I'll be planning to speak to Mr. Greer, Mr. Burton tomorrow, if you vote to approve this, to say, okay, here are the next steps we gotta take, and we don't need to dilly-dally. We need to move along with this, get a process, lay out a complete schedule, and start backing up. I would say we would probably look at trying to end construction in June. That would allow for any anticipated rain days, take a, say, a month's worth of rain days over a year, and then probably a week to 10 days to move in the furniture and the appropriate equipment to teach the classrooms. It's gonna be nip and tuck. I mean, make no bones about that. This will be a very aggressive schedule, considering there is no formal plan at this day. If we had plans sitting on a shelf and could go get them and say, "We're ready to advertise tomorrow," I'd feel a lot more comfortable. But we'll do everything humanly possible to make sure this adheres to the superintendent's schedule. I mean, that's, that's my job. If I don't make that, then I have to answer to Mr. Burton. But it is a very aggressive schedule. We anticipate somewhere in the 400 to 425 dollars per square foot. We never have built anything under the current IBC, which is, you've got to provide five square feet per student to resist an F5 tornado. We've never done anything like this.
In classrooms?
I'm sorry?
In classrooms, or just in a specific?
Yes ma'am, part of the building has to take all the occupants of that building, and if it's separate, it doesn't, you don't have to encompass all of the school. If we build a hallway that connects it, physically not being a separate building, but is connected to Donnie Bickham, then it's our understanding we have to provide this for every school in, excuse me, every student in the school, which is a huge undertaking. And you have to have things such as, within this protective shelter, doors that open to the inside instead of out, which, you know, life safety doors have to open out to get in. There's gotta be dedicated bathrooms that run on auxiliary power, you have stored water that you'd be able to maintain five square feet per student in this space for a two-hour time period for this storm. There's a lot of questions that, that we have to answer for the IBC, International Building Code, that we have not faced before. I understand a lot of school districts are having the same heartburn over this that I am, is that you're, some of these requirements are in direct conflict with the NFPA, National Fire Protection Act, which all your doors that you see have crash bars on it, and they swing out, in case there's a fire, you can get out. Now there has to be a door that is physically too heavy to operate, and it's gotta open in. Let's just say there's panic, people run up against it, and there's, there's case studies of this. It's happened in a bar in New York, which was made famous, doors opened in, there's a fire in the bar, everybody rushes down, people are compacted in the stairway up against a door, no one could get out. 176 people died in the fire. That's what started all this. So now I'm having to do some research to find out, how do I do this if a wind shutter is brought down over your doors to get out? Who rules? You know, so there's still a lot of questions here, we gotta answer on the technical side, so there's, there's no, no spare time on this one.
But, but I would like to, to add to this, if we do not meet that schedule, we can still maintain Blanchard Elementary for a semester until that building is finished. We are not going to rush construction, we are not going to make poor decisions just to meet a quick deadline. That gives us some flexibility. The second thing is, we also want to make sure that we are do our, we're doing our due diligence in planning an adequate-sized building, so that we are going to address the future growth in that area. There may be decisions this board makes in other school closures in that area, and if that's the case, we don't want to come back to you and say, well, we need to add on more classrooms. We need to make sure that we are preparing this draft, and, and our plans are going to meet the future needs of growth and, and possible other needs this board has. So we will take our time, we will do it correctly, as everything Mr. White does is, is always that way. But if we don't meet that deadline, we will be able to have some, some cushion of a semester before we move them.
Okay, and I would like to just point out that North DeSoto just approved that, North DeSoto just approved a large addition, 35,000 square feet for 17 million, so that's about $484 a square foot, so already a little higher.
We're in the ball, we're on the ballpark, yes ma'am.
Okay, yes, so, but, so we could probably get this done for under 20 million, is that what we're thinking?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, alright. That's all, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
You might not want to leave just yet. I got a question, what's the average, and, and this is, I know Donnie Bickham was one of the last schools we built, I remember that.
Yes ma'am.
What's the average age of our school facilities now?
I, I don't keep that number on the top of my head, but it's based upon what was done in the year 2010, that Vision 2020 Plan, when we did the school assessment, facility assessment. I want to remember, and I will confirm this number before you can get you the exact number tomorrow, but I want to say that in 2010, the average age of the schools were 67 years old.
Okay. That, hey, that's a, I, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be saying, what is that, 82?
Yeah.
I mean, this year, bird turns 100.
And Blanchard Elementary was built in 1948?
Forty-six?
Yeah, 46, 48, 47, somewhere.
Forty-seven? Okay, alright. Well, you know, I, I asked that question because we kinda want to have our students in, you know, facilities that are more, a little bit more modern sometimes, when we update it, because now we've gotten into this internet technology, and, you know, some places in certain schools that you can't get internet to certain things. I think when we, as we start doing some changes, I think with more modern facilities, like, I'm sure this wing will probably be, it probably- I'm sure this wing will probably be, it prob, you know, you guys will modernize it up until...
Absolutely.
Right.
I mean, a lot of these facilities, we've had to go back over the years and even add, you know, upgrades and wiring for technology. This would all be integrated into the building.
Into it, right.
Yes, ma'am.
And that saves, to me, it saves money instead of, you know, having to retrofit, retrofit, right?
Absolute.
Right, so those are the kinds of things I, I look at when we're talking about, you know, school closures and future school buildings, you know, because I definitely want our students to have the best.
Yes, ma'am.
Or as close as we can get to it.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Green, the staff just informed me, the average age of our, our facilities is seventy-two years.
Seventy-two years, yeah. Okay. Mr. Umlin?
Oh, Dawn.
Oh, Dawn took himself off?
No.
It were glitching. Oh, man.
Am I on or am I off? Okay.
And you'll be next, depending on what he does, you'll be next, Mr. Umlin. Mr. Little?
Call the question.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded. You know what? Listen. Okay, let's call for, let's call for the question, it's gotta, a move and a second. Got a second, so you got a motion on the floor and a second, let's go ahead and vote. But I mean, with it being Mr. Umlin's school, you know, I wanted him to say something.
Everybody calls it.
Yeah. I'll let you ease it in there for announcements. We ready to vote?
Are we voting? Call for the question.
We're gonna vote for call for the question. Voting for call for the question. So that means we're going to end debate. Okay, now we go to the original motion, which is eight point zero six. Please vote. Ms. Feible, after everyone has voted, voted, please show the vote. That, is that, that's it? Okay, it passes. Okay, before we go to eight point zero seven, Ms. Glover, Ms. Jones? Please state your name and address.
John Glover, ninety-one hundred Walker Road, apartment two seventeen, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven eighteen. So Eighty-first has fifty-seven students or a hundred and twenty-three students. During my investigation, I saw two different numbers, sets of numbers. So I'm wondering how many students are being served at Eighty-first? But even with that considered, the special, the specialities of these children, the exceptionalities of these children, is there a guarantee that they will be met with those same services at Atkins? Children already disadvantaged. What can they really meet at Atkins in that field? Because these are pre-K to K students, pre-K to three-years-old. You know, I could get up here and say, you know, Atkins is a failing school and has been failing forever, but you already know that. But then there's supposed to be a plan that's supposed to address Atkins' present situation. Has been since last year when the state superintendent swooped in here and gave his big performance, to which one of the board members referred, that if we don't do this, then he'll come in and he'll do what he does. So that means that we really here don't have a voice, or we really don't have true representation if we're living in fear of what the state superintendent can and cannot do here locally. Because if I'm not mistaken, each district has autonomy. You may have those mandates that are brought down from on high, but the day-to-day business of the school district is for the local district, the local board. I am very dissatisfied this evening, and I guess y'all can figure it out by the comments that I've used and said. You know, when it is that decisions are made that don't demonstrate that you gave true considerations to citizens, parents, definitely the students, because I need to know that when you send these children from whichever one of these locations, the assessments have been made, you know what to hone in on to help these children gain ground, but not only them, the ones that are already at the schools where there is some problems. See, you can tell me about a plan, but if a plan presented does not meet the needs of these children, your plan is no good to me, for me. So where is that plan? Is it to the, is it made public? Then we need to look at it. The decisions you'll make.
Thank you, Ms. Glover.
But we need to see it. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Kimberly Jones, one one eight nine three, Providence Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one two nine. Alternative solution revitalization and investment. Instead of closing schools, district can invest in improving existing facilities and attracting students back to struggling schools. Smaller school models, some smaller schools can be financially viable and even offer solid student outcomes with innovative staffing models. Redistricting and rezoning. Redistricting or rezoning schools can help create more balanced enrollment and reduce the need for closures. The lack of transparency alone calls for a need to delay this vote. Meet with directly impacted stakeholders and provide a clear information, especially pertaining to how this would benefit the students, parents and staff that are directly impacted by your decisions, and members, residents of the community that you are packing, impacting with your decision. And again, if you're gonna close anything, close those magnet schools and provide a magnet curriculum in every school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President. Eight point zero seven, move to approve, move to approve staff to coordinate plans for closure of Eighty-first Street ECE at the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and all students to be assigned to Atkins Elementary as recommended by Buildings, Building Grounds and Security Committee and submitted in the electronic mail-out.
Ms. Tharp?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Little?
No additional comments.
Ms. Tharp?
No comment.
No comment, that leaves us down to Dr. Vinson.
Very brief, I just wanted to say, or ask, could we just rethink it a little bit? Because again, a lot of these, the staff and students that were moved from Stony Hill were moved to Eighty-first and now they're being shuffled again. So I ask us to think about the families, the staff, because again, some of these folks were at Stony Hill previously, and so those are my comments, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Vinson. Ms. Yates?
Call for the question.
Do I have a second? Ms. Tharp, seconds. Call for the question, and has a second, please, please vote. This is for call for the question. And it passes. Okay, please vote on the original motion, which is eight point zero seven. After you vote, Ms. Feible, if you don't mind, please, and it passes with ten. Okay. We're down to superintendent's announcements.
The only announcement, board members, we would like to invite you, you hopefully saw that we have a high school voter registration drive, we have a kickoff event. Our guest speaker will be Louisiana Secretary of State Nancy Landry. That will be at C.E. Bird High School on April twenty-eighth at nine thirty a.m., and all board members are invited.
Okay, Ms. Bell?
We know announcements, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I like to announce. Everyone pray for the family that was involved in the fire. Two of those students attended District Twelve School Turner, and there is a fund being collected at the, what the name of the bank, you know, anyway, you can go by Turner and leave a donation, 'cause it goes directly to the funeral home. And the funeral for the, the two babies, which was kindergarten and second grade, and their grandmother, will be next Saturday at Lake Bethlehem, the, next Saturday, Community Bank? Community Bank, please. And the funeral for the great-grandmother will be the next Saturday, and I don't know where that's going to be, but please keep her in, please keep her in prayer. She lost a family.
Yeah.
Her only two babies, her mother and her grandmother. And keep her, I'm just asking you to please keep her and, just keep, just pray for them, 'cause, you know, you never wanna be in a situation like that, as a generation of people.
Right.
Please.
Yeah, and that, they lived right around the corner from me, Ms. Bell.
Yes, yes.
So they, they were my neighbors, but your students.
My students, 'cause the mother lived in the apartments next to Turner.
Got you.
And they went.
Um, yeah, that was, that was a very, very sad and unfortunate situation. Still a little shaken up by that. Dr. Vinson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, Madam President. As a request, Mr. Superintendent, for buildings that have been closed or vacant for at least five years, I'm hearing that we're looking at demolishing them, or there could be some discussion about demolishing them and turning them into green space, so could we look at an analysis for all the ones that have been closed for five years, what it would cost us to go ahead and move forward with demolition, and some of the cost savings with operations that we could potentially maybe save later on? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to just add again that the mobile clinic, the mobile dental clinic, starting on April the twenty-second, and every fourth Tuesday of the month afterwards, from ten to one, located outside the Peggy Prescott Center on the corner of Jewella and Greenwood Road, they will be doing free cleanings, floor rides, ceilings and screenings for all kids of all ages. So I just think that'd be important for some of our students and parents to, to know and have their kids to go there. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations and congratulations on being a man of crimson and cream.
Thank you, ma'am.
All righty. All righty, Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, I would like to say, last Friday, Southwood had a concert in the courtyard, which I went into it with the expectations of a high school band performance, okay? This is so much more than that. It is so much more. Every single one of y'all needs to come next year. You need to bring your checkbooks as well, because it's a big fundraiser for them. But it is, it is a phenomenal event, and when I tell you, they should be nationally recognized, I mean, you'll, you will leave it next year with the same exact feeling, and I would like to shine this positive light on them. There was no news there, there weren't any cameras other than the school cameraman, but I guarantee you, if there was a fight, the news would be all over it. They'd be happy to eat it up.
Absolutely.
They'd love it. But y'all can't be there when there's something awesome going on. So I urge all of you to come next year, I urge the news to come next year, because everyone will leave and they will be blown away. It is an incredible performance.
Yeah, Mr. Holden and that group does a great job. They put it on every year. I've been a couple of times and it is just as good every time I go, Ms. McLean. So as that board member, I know you are very proud.
Oh, I was blown away.
Yeah, good deal. I actually have an, an announcement, oh no, actually a request. Newton Smith next to Southern, I would like an update on where we are with that process, because, I mean, it's been almost a year now, and I need to see some, something happening other than a building sitting there. So if we can get an update on that, to see where we are with that, I surely would appreciate it. Mr. Mayo? Hold on one second, hold on. Okay.
Which, which, hey, y'all wanna flip a coin?
Oh, no.
Thirteen point zero one, move to executive session.
Okay. Mr. Mayo?
Second.
I didn't see it, you know, Mayo.
I'm on that.
But, hold on one second, y'all, before we get into that, let Dr. Dozart speak. You go ahead, Dr. Do, if you don't mind, hit your button for me. I think it's the button to the right. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. And thank you, Madam President, for that. I just wanna announce that Cattle Parish School Board voted a resolution to celebrate Grandparents' Day on annually, April the twentieth, and we do have this coming up April the twentieth Easter, and also have a annual Grandparent Day. Thank you.
Back to my motion, thirteen point zero one.
Wait, Ms. Bell, hold on, Ms. Bell.
Only thing, I just forgot, y'all know I forgot about this.
She won't let me get out the parking lot if I don't let her speak.
That thing, you know I forgot about Huntington. We had, thank you, baby, and thank you all too, about the, we having a parade, in-house parade for them, just like they do at the Super Bowl. We having a parade for my girls Thursday at the parade, at twelve, one o'clock, and I'm inviting all the board members to come, please, and everybody else, and they, after they've got a little program, and then they got their DJ, and they gonna enjoy themselves, we gonna celebrate. Plus, y'all all know I've been asking money, donation for the rings, and it's going to work out, because people are so nice to Dottie Bell. They got, I got one person vote, I can't tell the number, but I'm gonna tell you. So, and they planning, those rings should be ready about three, four months. We trying to have a ring ceremony for their six girls are graduating, and we'll make sure we have before they leave and go off to college. So anyway, but the parade is, come and enjoy the parade. Just like you looking at a Super Bowl, you finna look at one too. Thank you.
Hey, Ms., uh, Ms. Dollar, make sure we get a reminder on our email, so we, I won't, I won't miss.
Forget like you forgot today.
Like she forgot today.
Okay, well, yeah, make sure I get a reminder. Okay, well, yeah, make sure I get a reminder because we definitely want to celebrate those young folks. Ms. Yates?
13.01, move to executive session.
Okay. Ms. Mayo?
I forgot we got executive session.
Yeah.
Two minutes.
We will move into executive session for 10 minutes. They asked for a 10-minute executive session. Okay, see you later, Ms. Lansdale.